Welcome friends, welcome to Anjali tutorial. Aajiy loya hisut malukar karne quadrant equation jitla ami pohi already hek koyilo amar bukor exercise kini. So here quadrant equation nor ami dihak homi konata special session loy aajiy loya hisut malukar usore. To aaj session to ami kisman numerical problems discuss kore, okay? So here numerical problems bilak kena kaya kore, kena kaya approach kore, kena kaya kori bolake. Gutekhni kotha diin detail discuss kore, so tumaluke please video to sabha bhalkay, okay? Aro motta kota konze video to tumaluke aarom honi par akbar hek follow kaya sabha skip no kori ba, theka se? Kar skip koyile ki ma bohot kotha rojai. Aro my guarantee dikon tumaluke jadi video to ever bhalkay, gute video to swan hoy. Tumaluke quadrant equation or I think almost eighty nine to ninety percent. Ninety percent ki pura hundred percent it tumaluke mojari gute series to swa quadrant equation or. So my kova parim zet tumaluke ekku doubt na thake quadrant equation aro final examo jee. Problems nahar quadrant equation apath tumaluke easily solve kori ba pariva, eto my kota theka se? To aajiy video to ami eta kisman numerical problems kore, to already kolu, to tumaluke video to sabha, theka se? Aro video to sahata ki kori ba tumaluke, ma gota zidhre konze math source ikon practice copy tumaluke thake. Hekon loy lo ba, theka se? My buzay jam first concept to loy lo ba, tumaluke nize kori ba try kori ba, okay? Theka se? Okay, so dihane ami aaj session to aarom bokoro, theka se? Aro aarom bokar guta takthar vada koli su, je? Tumaluke ki, jitu amar telegram channel asai, telegram channel to join koi lo ba, theka se? Telegram channel link to my arre dhi di su, theka se? Ito dihisa link to tolot diyausai telegram channel. Aaj channel to join koi lo ba tumaluke jadi ki ba doubt thake, aaj doubt bilak tumaluke khudi ba pariva aaj channel to, theka se? Aro discuss kori ba pariva, okay? So aaj channel to dihisa ito join koi lo ba, theka se? Aro smartphone asai, place draw java telegram download kori ba, tate search kori ba Anjali tutorial. Ahi jabo, tate join koi lo ba, okay? And tate tumaluke jikunut tumalukar problem discuss kori ba pariva, ki ba doubt thakila mo khudi ba pariva. Okay, fine, aro amar facebook page asai, facebook page to tumaluke ki kori ba? Like koi lo ba, follow koi lo ba, Anjali tutorial fully facebook adari search mara, aaj page to dekha paba. Aro wait to follow kori ba, ya to tumaluke comment kori ho, zikori ho, mo personally message pata ba pariva, theka se? Ki ba doubt thakile, okay? Okay, fine, so ekini olap nijon promotion koyilo nu, theka se? Jana kaya sobe kore, okay, fine, ta vesa letia ami ki karo? Letia ami amar session to aarom bokoro, okay? So fine, aajiy amar first problem to some, okay, to moita nijoka hide koi su, theka se? Nijoka hide koi su, aro tumaluke paint paper loy hazu hoi swa, theka se? To we will start the session now, okay? Theka se? To ato hokol aajiy amar session to first problem, okay? First question asai, so aaj first question to swat maluke, ki asai? To first question to ki koi se find a natural number whose square diminish by eighty four is equal to twice of eight more than the given number. Ki koi se? Enayata sabha bikhon khao liwa, zar borgo eighty four komai dilay, hain khato tinigunat koi aath besir hoi te, homan hoy. The kon question to olap confusing lagi se, etata kaya part part kaya buzay gus, theka se? Find a natural number, ami eta sabha bikhon khao liya bolake, theka se? Dhori thalu, motto number two ki nazanho, theka se? Sumat dhori thalu, mojito sabha bikhon kabha natural number ulab olaga asai, eto hokol x. Okay, theka se? Dihin lake, ita ki hul? Whose square diminish by eighty four? Jodi mo a x jitu mo natural number asai, yar square koyile mo ki bam x square. Aro yar pram mojari eighty four diminish manaki komaidyo, okay? Diminish manaki komaidya, so mojari mojito x natural number asai, tar square koyilo mo ki palo, x square palo. Tar pram mojari eighty four diminish ban komaidyo, eighty four jodi mo komaidyo. Techala he to kar logo equal hobo, kar logo equal hobo. Twice of eight more than the given number. Mane mojito x asai, jitu sabha bikhon khao asai, he sabha bikhon khato logat jodi mo aath plus kori eight more hoy, aath besi kori. Theka se? Jitu hain khamo pam, tar tinigunor hoi te, twice mana tinigun, so tinigunor hoi te homan hobo. Theka se? To basically mojito mathematical expression hobo, mo given condition to pura, a mathematical expression to hokol aju, okay? Etia. Kahani khatam, etuk solve koi le hokol. Theka se? So x square minus eighty four equal to ki hobe mo twice x plus twenty four, okay? Tar vesa ki bam, aro simplification koyile ami, ki bam x square minus three x minus of one zero eight equal to zero. Kar twenty four to mojari left hand side loya ho, so minus twenty four hoi jabo, so eighty four minus twenty four ki hoi jabo mo one zero eight. So ki hobe x square minus three x minus one zero eight equal to zero, etu hoi jabo mo quadrant equation. Theka se? Etia a quadrant equation to ami easily solve kori ba paro by method of factorization ki hobe? So twelve nine ja, kiman, no barogun ekhvat, so twelve bar nine hobe, so mo ki three x to ki liko paro? Twelve x plus nine x minus one zero eight equal to zero. To first duta pram x common nom, thakibhmo x minus twelve. Aro second duta pram plus nine common nom, ok thakijabo x minus twelve, ta vesa tom ki hobe? Factor duta x minus twelve, aro x plus nine equal to zero. To yar pram x travel ki ki bam, x travel twelve pam, aro x travel ki bam minus nine pam. Techindu x travel minus nine to mo ki hobe, pojichya nohobo, valid nohobo ba pojichya nohobo. Not valid, theka se? Not valid, so kele valid nohobo, eto kele valid nohobo. Kar amar ki koi se? Natural number koi se, so natural number koopra start hoy. One or price start hoy, sabha bikhon khao bliko jas, sabha bikhon khao koopra start hoy, koopra start hoy, no? Par jala negative value malabo parin jalo, noaro to x travel ekana ki hobe noare, minus nine hobe noare. Aro mo techala x travel ki hobe jabo, twelve hobe, aro x mo ki dhori shilo, mo sabha bikhon khato dhori shilo guti ke mo. Ki koi se? Question to koi se se? Natural number two liwa, so natural number to mo ki hokol twelve, to twelve hokol a question to answer. Ita atakke raha kotha tohul se, a question to koyilo hoy, twelve palu answer to, itia ami correct question nae kena kaya gompam. So simply ami ki kore, condition to satisfy kore sam, itar x square minus twenty eighty four. So my twelve hor jodi square koro mo ki bam pam, one forty four, theka se? Tar pram mojari eighty four minus koi do, techala mo ki bam? Eighty four jodi mo one forty four ba minus koot, techala mo ki bam sixty pam. Pamne, theka se? Sixty palu, ita ki hese? X plus eight, right, etu left hand side mo sixty palu, right hand side ki babalage? Three into x plus eight or equal babalage, so x plus eight koyile ki hobe, twelve plus eight kiman hobe twenty. Aro twenty into three ki hobe mo sixty ulabo, guti ke left hand side or right hand side or jitu condition ami. Pasi tohle to satisfy kori se, guti ke amar twelve to answer to correct koi se. To tumaluke enaka exama re verification kori sawa par, okay? Tumaluke answer to correct question nae, enaka verify koi lo par. Theka se? So ato asli a question to answer, theka se? So enakar hona problem ahi bokaro tumaluke final examo, okay? Aro ahi tohka hatanta dekha paazai, guti ke tumaluke practice koi ba, okay? Enaka approach koi bolake, enakar no problem bilak. Okay, fine, etia ami amar next problem to jao, so ato sobe buji pala, okay? Okay, dihala ami amar next problem to jao, theka se? Next problem to jao. So amar next problem to asai aju, okay? So next problem to ki koi se? N, n hoy to a hobe lage, okay? So a natural number, theka se? When increased by twelve is equal to the one sixty times of its reciprocal. Find, find the number, eta sabha bikhon khao asai, he sabha bikhon khato mojari baro bhaai do. Theka se? Baro jodi bhaai do, tommo eta sabha bikhon khao asai mo dhori thalu x. A x tomo baro jodi bhaai do, iki hoi jabo, x plus twelve hoi jabo. Xeta moosat ki asai sabha bikhon khao asai, he hain khato mojari baro bhaai do. Techala mo hain khato ki hoi jabo, x plus twelve. Number to ki hoi jabo, x plus twelve. Etia a natural number to amar pai galu, no tu natural number x plus twelve, okay? A x plus twelve to kar logo equal hoy, ki koi se? This x plus twelve is equal to the one sixty times of its reciprocal. Jitu x to mo sabha bikhon khao, tar reciprocal ki hobe? One by x, aro a one by x or kiman logat equal, one sixty times logat equal. Jodi mo tar reciprocal jitu potikram, x or potikram ki? One by x, to he one by x tomojari one sixty times kori. Techala jitu pam, he to kar logo equal hobo, a x plus twelve logat equal hobo, okay? So main amar mathematical condition to ami pai galu. Etia amar etu solve koi le ami answer pai jabo. Etia kotha tohul, ifal one by x asai, theka se? To mo left hand side or right hand side to falaki koyilo, a x to a multiply koyilo, theka se? X to a multiply koi le ki hobe, a x to a falaki multiply koi le ki hobe? X square plus twelve x, a right hand side jadi mo x to a multiply koi do. Ki hobe one by x into x, x, x cancel jabo, to thakijabo call one sixty. Theka se? Simple calculation, okay? X to a mo left hand side or right hand side to falaki multiply koi do, okay? So x square ki hokol plus twelve x minus. Ki, one sixty equal to zero, etu palu. Etia ato ami easily solve kori ba parin, theka se? By method of factorization, so x square plus twenty x minus eight x minus one sixty equal to zero, etu pai galu. Kar twenty pura eight kola kiman thake, twelve x thake, aro twenty into eight multiply koyile ami kiman pa, one sixty pa, okay? To dihala first duta pram ki common lo parim, x common lo parim, so itu hobe x plus twenty. Aro baaki to pura minus eight common lo parim, x plus twenty, theka se? Equal to zero. To yar pram effecter duta ki bam, eta effecter hobe mo x plus twenty. Aro eta effecter ki hobe, x minus eight equal to zero. To x travel ki ki bam, x travel pam minus of twenty, aro eta bhalo ki bam x equal to eight. So x equal to minus twenty to mo ki hobe, valid nohobo. Theka se? X equal to minus twenty to not valid, valid nohobo. Pojichya nohobo, kele pojichya nohobo, aagha problem to hoi te, ke kar? Natural number negative wad jabo noare, guti ke x minus twenty jitu value hobe, etu ami lobon noare. Okay, to dihala ami ki lobolai bo x travel, so x travel bohle bo ami eight. So dihala amar a given equation to amar answer ki hobe eight, okay? Techala mo jitu sabha bikhon khao uli bolaga asile, he sabha bikhon khato ki hobe aath. Theka se? Etia kotha tohul amar jitu question asai, he to logat amar answer to, kudho hosen nae ami verify kori bolake. Theka se? Jati ami emana hundred percent sure se amar question to kudho se, okay? Tumaluke techala nisindho thaio pariva se, etu full marksar, okay? To dihala swa, eight, a eight tomojari eta twelve bhaai do. Techala ki hoi jabo, eight plus twelve kiman hoi jabo, eight plus twelve kiman hoi jabo, twenty hoi jabo. Theka se ne, aro etu kar logo equal bliko se? So a eight or one, potikkam or one sixty times logat equal. So eight or reciprocal ki hobe, one by eight, tar one sixty times to dial ami kiman pam? Twenty pam, theka se? So equal hosen ne, eight plus twelve twenty, aro one sixteen to one by two twenty. Guti ke given jitu amar mathematical condition diyaasai, so tar laga tahe to amar satisfy koi se. Amar jitu answer raise, so dihala ami gompam se amar answer to, ki hundred percent correct, okay? So ato asli a question to answer. Theka se? To buji pala sobe, okay? To dihala ami amar next question to aarom bokoro. Okay, so aju screen or ahile amar next question, question number three, theka se? So aju a question to amar ki koi se swa? If Zeba was younger by five years then what she really is? Ita ki hul? Zeba asai ne, Zeba namor edhoni swali asai ne, theka se? To a Zeba namor jizhoni swali asai ne, suppose edhoni Zeba, theka se? To a Zeba namor jizhoni swali asai ne, tar boyaf mo dhori thalu present is mo dhori thalu, x years. X years. Theka se? Ita koi se je? Zeba ziman boyaf hor asai ne, ta koi jodi taay panch boshor kuru kholen. To jodi taetia x years, ta jodi panch boshor kuru kholen, x hotke, techala taay age kiman holtene? X minus five years holtene? Theka se? X minus five years holtene, theka se? Techala ki holtene, taay boyaf hor borgo, mane taay panch boshor jodi kuru kholen. Taay boyaf hor borgo kiman holtene, taay boyaf hor square kiman holtene, x minus five whole square, theka se? A x minus five whole square to ki holo logat equal holtene? Tar actual boyaf hor, tar actual boyaf hor panch gunat koi, taay bottom man jitu actual boyaf, tar. Theka se? Asol boyaf hor panch gunat koi kiman besi holtene, ekharo besi holtene. Theka se? Clear, okay? To ekin lake jodi clear, ami hokol amar kam, amar mathematical expression pai galu. To aju solve koi dilay amar answer ulay jabo, to x minus five whole square koyile ami ki bam? Etu bacha bachal horai gompabo, x square minus ten x plus twenty five equal to five x plus eleven. Theka se? Ta vesa ki hobe, x square minus ten x aro minus five x ki hobe, minus fifteen x. Aro twenty five or pura eleven, ifalaki usi koi kiman thakile, fourteen equal to zero. To aju kiti ami solve kore, x square minus fifteen x tomo kena kari koi parin, fourteen x minus x plus fourteen equal to zero. Ta vesa ki hobe, duta pram x common ahibo, x minus fourteen, baaki duta pram minus one common ahibo, x minus fourteen. Okay, so factor duta ki ki bam, x minus fourteen aro x minus one equal to zero. To yar pram x travel ki ki ahibo, fourteen, aro eta ahibo x travel one. So x travel jitu one ahibo, etu ami lobon noare, okay? So ato not valid. Ita kotha tohul kele valid nohobo, jodi x travel one ari lo, jodi amar Zeba, a jizhoni Zeba asai ne, Zeba jodi one year hoi jai. To panch boshor ako jebun taay boyaf kiman hoi jabo, minus four. To eta tar mane ki jonmo aho na, minus four taay minus four years mane ki? Taay jonmo, mane sariv boshor apishotha taay jonmo hobo, theka se? To boyaf kiti aho mane age kiti aho negative hobe noare, etu unrealistic kotha, theka se? Guti ke ami one to lobon noaru, to eti lale x equal to ki hobe, fourteen hobo, theka se? To tar asol boyaf kiman hobo, wait, wait, wait. Techala tar asol boyaf kiman hobo, tar asol boyaf kiman hobo, tar asol boyaf hobo. Aju, tar asol boyaf hobo fourteen, okay? Techala Zeba kiman years, to Zeba amar fourteen years. Ita kotha tohul, amar answer to ami uli alu, kena amar answer to, kudho hosen nae ami sabo lay bo, theka se? Ita kotha tohul Zeba bottom man boy kiman fourteen years, to five years ako jas Zeba kiman boy hobo, nine years. Theka se? Fourteen minus five nine years. Ita kotha tohul, nine square koyile ami kiman pam, nine or jodi square kori jala kiman pam, eighty one. Theka se? Nine or square koyile ami kiman pam, eighty one. Aro he to kar logo equal hobo, tar actual boyaf hor five, five times or ke eleven besi hobo. The actual boyaf kiman fourteen, so fourteen or five times kiman hobo, fourteen into five kiman hobo, fourteen into five seventy. Aro seventy plus eleven koyile ami ki bam, eighty one. So duta equal hosen ne, tar panch boshor ako taay boyaf hor square to koyile ziman paisu. Aro taay real boyaf hor panch gunat logat eleven juk koyilo ami, ekatai paisu. Guti ke amar condition to satisfy koi se, guti ke amar answer to correct koi se, eto amar hundred percent correct answer, okay? To ato asli kahani a question to, theka se? To akha go tumaluke jadi buji pala, ekku confusion nae, to dihala ami amar next question to jabo paro, okay? Theka se? To dihala ami amar next question to jao. To aju asli amar next question, okay? A question to the figure diyaasai, tumaluke dekha paisa screen or, eta figure diyaasai, figure to ki? Ame bujilobolake first, figure to parame answer to kori bolake, okay? First ami question to read koro, to question to ki koi se? In the center of a rectangular lawn of dimension fifty meter into forty meter. Ita kotha tohul, ayo takar lawn, lawn mane ki? Lawn mane hokol mane khorr, manhokhorr ako jibla khahoni thakeno, sutal taipar amar bononi thakeno, ame bononi buliko, ba khahoni buliko. Theka se? Etu lawn buliko, techaka tapra case lawn tennis aise. Jitu era game asai lawn tennis, so lawn tennis mane ki, lawn mane ki, jitu amar manhokhorr ako jikon khahoni tam sutal taipar hujia green color. Manthake, okay? So hain lawn, hain lawn kanakba rectangular, ayo takar. Theka se? Or ta dimension kiman fifty meter by forty meter. Mane jikon amar, mojari kanak ari picture to dekha jiso jitu green color dangar rectangle lagi sano, ekhano amar lawn, okay? Aro hain lawn khono tumar kiman asai, length kiman asai fifty meter. Okay, fifty meter length asai, aro breadth kiman asai, breadth asai tumar forty meter. Tumar dimension to diyaasai, question on, theka se? So fifty meter by forty meter amar dimension to diyaasai. Ita ki hul? Kahani to? A lawn khono ekdom center out, okay? Ekdom center, ami eta ki khani bolake, pond khani bolake, eta pukuri khani bolake. Theka se? A lawn khono ekdom center out, ekdom center out thakalai bo, theka se? Eta ki khani bolake ami rectangular, pond khani bolake, pukuri khani bolake. Ita kotha tohul, pukuri toh ami enakake khani bolai bo, jate a jikubar lawn thakibo. Jitu a green color lawn to dihisan ne? Pukuri toh aguripalai jitu lawn thakibo, jitu ghake thakibo, a guti area to green color area to kiman hobe lay bo bliko se? A green color area to hobe lay bo tumar, eleven eighty four, eleven eighty four meter square hobe lay bo. Aro pukuri toh ekhala khani bolai bo, jate amar a green color portion to area to kiman hoy. Mane pukuri toh aguripalai jikini lawn asai, a lawn kini area hota area to kiman hoi, jaka to eleven eighty four meter square hoy, theka se? Dihin lake buji pala, okay? Etia kotha tohul, swa, lawn khon kiman dihola se, fifty meter dihola se? To amar pukuri toh koth khani bolai bo rectangular pukuri toh ekdom center out khani bolai bo. Tommo dhori thalu etu center mane ki ekdom, etu fifty mid point, theka se? Mane left hand side yar kiman asai, twenty five asai, a right hand side jo kiman asai, twenty five asai. Ato forty ekdom mid point. Center, to a falaki mane asai mo dhori thalu, a falaki mane asai twenty thakibo, ari a falaki mane thakibo, twenty meter thakibo. Theka se? Dihin lake buji pala. Etia, ita swa, ami center pukuri to khani baleh, a falakra ziman erim, okay? Etia amar belakata color lo di su, techat tumaluke buji bolai hobi da, okay? Tommo blue color dihui di su, okay? So mo a portion to pura, a portion to par ekin lake pukuri to ekin lake ziman tha erim. A pukuri toh ekin lake ziman tha erim, a falu mo right hand side jo mo pukuri toh a falakra himanthaa eri bolai bo. Theka se? Techai ham center pukuri to porivo. Theka dore, mo a falakra ziman tha erim, a falakra ziman tha erim, a par a portion to pura, uparupra. A falakra ziman tha erim pukuri le, a falu mo himanthaa eri bolai bo. Buji pala ne? Theka se? Himanthaa eri bolai bo. Okay? Etia. Kotha tohul, je mo kiman eri bolai bo, ekava center mane mo potifala equal equal eri bolai bo, techai ham hobo. To a falaj jadi mo xero, a falo xeroi bolai bo. A falaj jadi mo x meter a apply pukur, a x meter a apply pukuri toh bano. To he falam, kar equal center out bolai bo, pukuri toh, x meter, x meter, x meter mo sop palai, ari bolai bo. Theka se? X meter, x meter, x meter, x meter mo sop palai, ari bolai bo. Etia mojari x meter, x meter a falai ari do, techala mo pukuri to length kiman hoi jabo. A area toh kvar length kiman hoi jabo, a area toh karm length hoi jabo kiman, fifty minus two x. Hovone, aro breadth kiman hoi jabo, breadth hoi jabo mo forty minus two x. Hobo, pukuri to length kiman hoi jabo, fifty minus two x, aro breadth to kiman hoi jabo, forty minus two x. Etia swa, jodi mo a lawn toh jitu ka green color portion dekha, etu area to kiman hobe lay bo bliko se? Eleven eighty four meter square hobe lay bo bliko se. Etia kotha tohul, mojari gute rectangle to, gute lawn toh kura, gute mojito ayo takar lawn toh kura asai ne? Gute lawn toh kura pram mojari pukuri toh area to minus koi do, a white color portion to mojari minus koi do. Techai hale mo ki ulabo, a lawn toh kura area ulabo. Theka se? Mojari gute rectangle to pura, pukuri toh area to, pond toh area to jodi mo minus, minus koi do. Techai hale mo ki ulabo, situ amar lawn toh asai green color portion to area toh ulabo, aro he to equal to kiman? Eleven eighty four, etakota holo gute rectangular lawn khona area kiman hobo. Kar fifty by forty diyaasai, sore ke area hobe one, fifty into forty. Okay, so gute rectangular lawn khona area kiman hobo, fifty into forty. Theka se? To yar pram ki minus koi bolai bo, yar pram minus koi bolai bo, pukuri toh area toh, so pukuri toh area kiman? Forty minus twice x. So forty minus twice x multiplied by one fifty minus twice x, length into breadth equal to mo kiman levelai bo. So a guti equal to kiman levelai bo, eleven eighty four, etu pukuri toh area. Theka se? A guti toh hokol ki pukuri toh area, okay? Okay, a guti toh minus koi dam kiman levelai bo, eleven eighty four. Theka se? Kiman levelai bo, eleven eighty four ulabo lay bo, okay? So eleven eighty four ulabo, theka se? Okay, sama koi di su eta belakpez lo, ki hobe, mane fifteen to forty asan ne? Gute area toh, so fifteen to forty pura, mojari jitu rectangle asai, rectangle, mane pukuri toh asai, pukuri toh area kiman? Pukuri toh length hoi jabo tumar, kiman fifty minus twice x. Okay? Kiman fifty minus twice x. Fifty minus twice x. Okay, aro breadth kiman forty minus twice x. To ami gute area to pura jadi a to minus koi equal to kiman levelage, eleven eighty four. So etu koi shilo. Theka se? Etia etu koyile kiman hobo, fifteen to forty koyile mo ki bam, two thousand pam. Theka se? Aro yar pram du duta pram, tu eta ta common lo parin, techala enakha hovone, two. Twenty five minus x, ari falai hoi jabo into two. Twenty minus x equal to eleven eighty four. Theka se? So ato two thousand thakii jabo, theka se? Etu two two za kiman jabo, four. Aro mojari ekta multiply koro, techala kiman hobe, twenty five twenty za five hundred minus twenty five x. Minus ki hobe, twenty x. Aro kiman hobe, minus mancha plus x square, okay? So equal to kiman jabo, eleven eighty four. Etima do falai four eta ta common lo paro, four eta common lo le ki hobe, yar thakibhmo five hundred. Theka se? Yar thak four twa twi jabo, to ultimately kit kibo, minus five hundred, theka se? Minus five hundred. Okay? Minus five hundred, etu bhalkay likhi di su. Okay, so aju kit kibo, minus five hundred thakibhmo, plus twenty five x aro twenty x koyile kiman thaibhmo, forty five x. Aro minus x square equal to, four eight, thirty eight, four nine za thirty six, aro four six za twenty four. A five hundred, five hundred cancel jabo, to ultimately mo kit kile, x square minus forty five x. Plus two ninety six equal to zero. To a dihak homi kon to, a quadrant equation to ma palu kene, ultimately, okay? Theka se? Kena kaya ahi le bujti buji pala, okay? Simple calculation koyilo, ami ki koyilo gute rectangular jitu lawn asai ne? A lawn khono pram, ari pond toh area to minus koi lo, minus koi le amar jitu green color portion asai ne? Pond toh par aguripalai jitu green color portion asai ne? A portion toh area equal hobo, aro a portion toh area amar question to kiman diyaasai, eleven eighty four diyaasai, theka se? So aju koyilo, so ami ultimately quadrant equation to ki bam, x square minus forty five x plus two ninety six equal to zero. So my, etu output kori. Theka se? Yar etu put kori, to ki bam, ultimately x square minus forty five x plus two ninety six equal to zero. Theka se? Etia mo enakar duta number phibolake, the plus minus koi re, forty five x popolai bo, aro multiply koyile two ninety six popolai bo. So ki hobe number duta, so ekta hobe ni thirty seven or eight hobe ni ki? Thirty seven or eight hobe. Theka se? Kar thirty seven plus eight kiman hoi forty five, aro thirty seven into eight koyile kiman pam, two ninety six pam. Theka se? So first to pram x common nom, ki tay bo x minus thirty seven, aro second duta pram minus eight common nom, ki thakibhmo, x minus thirty seven. To yar par ami factor kita ki bam, x minus thirty seven aro x minus eight equal to zero. Theka se? To pukuri toh dila prostol jabo le koi se? To pukuri toh dila prostol jabo lay bo ami, so x equal to ki hobe, thirty seven, aro eta x equal to ki hobe, eight. Ita kotha tohul, x equal to thirty seven toh mo lobon parin jalo. Theka se? Jodi mo x equal to thirty seven no, techala pukuri toh dihar prosto ki hoi jabo. Negative hor ahi jabo, okay? So pukuri dihar length ke tiya, ki hobe noare, negative bhai bo noare? Guti ke mo x equal thirty seven to ki hobe, not valid. Theka se? Pojichya nohobo. Okay, x equal thirty seven to pojichya nohobo. Guti ke mo x equal to ki lobolai bo, eight lobolai bo. Jodi x equal to eight long, techala pukuri toh deep kiman pam, dihase le kiman, fifty minus two x, el kiman asai ne? Pukuri toh fifty minus two x, two x.